We'll call the meeting to order. And is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
What's a tie?
I'll second.
Great, thank you. And all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed? That passes. And we will have the council liaison update, please.
Good evening, everybody. I hope everybody is settling and settling into this nice mild fall that we're having. And looking forward to Halloween coming up the end of the week. For my update, final plan for Viking Metals, second edition, was approved by council. The site plan, CUP drainage easement vacation for Atlas Villas memory care was all passed. So that is going forward. The zoning change from industrial to residential for the three or four lots on Johnson Street was passed. Council may be reviewing an ordinance for short-term rentals in the coming months. That'd be like your Airbnbs. We discussed it a little bit at our work meeting last night. And it's, it was brought up because of, call it one problem property. That where it's a larger house that facilitates lots of people and has lots of activity. And neighbors were not exactly happy. So that's what spurred this possible ordinance. We're not sure if possible ordinance would be the cure or if there's another route. But just to let you know that this might come up in front of planning in a couple of months, maybe. Not sure. But council set out a RFP to have a facility study done for all city buildings. Thirteen different businesses responded to that RFP with proposals. And ultimately, council did choose ICS WOLD to do the study. So that should be progressing here in the next couple of months. We look forward to getting a report back to see how our facilities stand and what potential new facilities we may need to start planning for based on population change and services that are required. We reviewed an ordinance change to allow alcohol at the senior center. And ultimately, we sent it back to staff for changes. This is spurred by the East Bethel seniors rent out the senior center next door. Some inquiries had been made as whether if a wedding were to be hosted there, for example, could alcohol be brought in? Short answer right now is no. Another answer is possibly yes, but more expensive. So the ordinance that we looked at last night was the first draft of this that was too far expanding. That would cover all city properties and that was not the intent that we wanted. We wanted to just be for senior center. So that should be discussed more in the future here. Fall town hall meeting will be on Thursday, November thirteenth, starting at 6:00 PM in the senior center. It's almost November already. And that's ultimately it. Do you have any questions, concerns you'd like to bring up to me? All right, well, as always, thank you for your service to our city. And I hope you have a safe and happy Halloween.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Okay, now we'll go on to the approval of minutes. Did anyone, does anyone have any corrections?
I don't.
Nothing.
You've got nothing?
Me too.
Nothing? Corey, nothing?
No.
Christina? Okay, I guess they were perfect. So do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I wasn't here, so I'm going to abstain completely from this topic.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, Corey has.
I'll second.
Great. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
I'll abstain.
All right. So that motion passes. And the next thing on our agenda is a public hearing. So Grace, are you going to go ahead with that?
Yes. All right, good evening commissioners. This is a public hearing for a planned unit development final plan for Cliffs Anderson Acres. Sherco Construction has applied for a PUD final plan for a three-lot subdivision called Cliffs Anderson Acres. This property is located north of County Road seventy-four or two hundred and seventeenth Avenue. Property currently is twenty point three five acres. It is zoned rural residential and guided rural residential. Surrounding properties, property to the south and west are zoned rural residential. The property to the north is part of the Gordy Mickelson Wildlife Management Area. And the properties to the east are a subdivision within Linwood Township. This property is within the Significant Natural Environmental Area overlay. As a reminder, this overlay district is applied to properties that Met Council, Inoka Conservation District, and/or DNR have identified as containing native vegetation or natural resources that contribute to the health, welfare, and quality of life of East Bethel residents. This application probably sounds familiar to you because this was brought before you as a concept plan at the May twenty-seventh Planning Commission meeting and the June ninth City Council meeting. This was also brought before you as a PUD preliminary plan and preliminary plat at the August Planning Commission meeting and the September City Council meeting. During those reviews, no conditions were recommended pertaining to that overlay district. This request is for the approval of a PUD final plan as required by Section fifty-nine of the zoning ordinance for all properties within that SNEA overlay. The city has a relatively high level of discretion when reviewing a PUD. It must meet the comp plan standards and the PUD also must meet the standards established within Section fifty-six of our zoning ordinance, or the PUD section. Packet contains an in-depth analysis of each of these standards. The purpose of a PUD is to allow flexibility and variation in exchange for higher levels of design, environmental protection, landscaping, pedestrian access, all of those types of things. Really, the major point here, considering that this is brought on by the fact that this property is within that environmental overlay, is probably environmental protection. Staff finds that there's a relatively limited environmental impact associated with this development. Homes are being built on land that's already bare and agricultural. There are a small number of trees being removed, but really the minimum that's required for driveway access for these new lots. And there's overall a pretty limited site disturbance. During the previous reviews of this item, no conditions were recommended pertaining to the SNEA overlay during the Planning Commission meeting nor that City Council meeting. The City Council is also reviewing this item and then the additional final plat at the November tenth meeting. The final plat is not up for review tonight because that only gets reviewed by the City Council. Staff has found that the proposed planned unit development final plan meets the standards established within the zoning ordinance and is consistent with the PUD preliminary plan previously reviewed. Again, this goes over the primary purpose of the planned unit development. I'm not going to get too into that. I do want to emphasize, though, that because this PUD is required due to the presence of that environmental overlay, you are welcome to make any recommendations, but especially recommendations for conditions pertaining to environmental quality. So that might be something like requiring a certain number of native plantings, requiring a tree preservation plan, something like that. But again, we found that this has pretty minimal site disturbance and none of these recommendations were made during previous reviews. This project is also not asking for any PUD flexibility. So there's nothing in our zoning code that's being violated or asking to be waived as part of this development. It complies with all standards in our code that any other subdivision would be held to. So something to note there. Recommendation is for the Planning Commission to open the public hearing and recommend approval of this item based on the applicant's submission, contents of the staff report, any received public testimony tonight, and other evidence available to the Planning Commission. A draft resolution of approval has been created for you with findings of fact and conditions of approval. It's been included in your packet. You are welcome to modify that if you would like to suggest any conditions on that approval resolution. On the other hand, you may also recommend denial of this item. This is not recommended by staff. But if you find one or more areas of the city code that are not being met by this request, you are welcome to recommend denial. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So I'll open the public hearing for this item. And does anyone want to speak? No. Okay. So there's no one that wants to speak here. I'm going to close the public hearing. And then commissioners, do you have any comments on this? Any questions for Grace?
It's pretty pitting dry.
I agree, it looks good. So I don't have any questions, nothing sticks out to me.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Nothing? Oh my gosh.
Then I'd recommend a motion for approval as read.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I second.
Great. And any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Being none, that motion passes. All right. The next item is a review and recommend any updates to Section sixty-six dash one six five sidewalks and trails.
We have Public Works Manager Nate Ashford with us tonight. I'll be providing a brief presentation on this item, kind of a high-level overview, and then some legal and planning considerations for your discussion. And then from there, he can answer any questions and kind of help guide your discussion on this topic. Nate, please correct me if I'm wrong on any of this. So after the request of the City Council, city staff has initiated the process of reevaluating the city's park dedication fees and creating a possible trail dedication fee. Section sixty-six dash one six five of the city code requires developers to install trails and sidewalks in new developments dependent on the development zoning district. This has been in our code for a very long time, but since two thousand eight, the recession in two thousand eight, this has largely been waived or ignored with new subdivisions. Another element of that is that our city has many large lot rural subdivisions. And it doesn't always make a ton of sense for trails to be created in those. You might end up with trails that go nowhere or don't comply with our trails plan if those are actually created as required by that ordinance. At the October fourteenth Park Commission meeting, the Park Commission recommended an increase in the park dedication fee and then a new trail dedication fee of fifteen hundred dollars per unit in lieu of trail construction. So this would be charged if the development is not constructing those trails. This trail dedication fee does require an update to the city code to add that language and then also to establish a fund for collecting that fee into. We currently do accept park dedication in lieu of land dedication for parks. That's often done when a park is, or a development is proposed in an area where there is not a park in our plan or it's not feasible to create a park. The topic of discussion tonight is that trail dedication fee, not that park dedication fee. Currently, the city does not have a trail dedication fee. Trail dedication and park dedication is a bit of a legal topic. There was a case in two thousand three, or not, two thousand and twenty-three for the city of Burnsville or involving the city of Burnsville that kind of delved into these legal nuances of park fees. So I just want to give you an overview on those. Cities are allowed to collect a park dedication fee according to state statute four two six dot three five eight in lieu of land dedication. Park dedication must be based on a few factors. First, the market value of the unplanted land for which the park fees have not already been paid. Park fee must also be based on a rough proportionality to the need created by the development. So you want to think about the number of residents living in a development. Need to reasonably be saying, okay, these people will be using a park. Need to base it on that. Fund must also be held, or the money must also be held in a dedicated fund. If you create a separate park and trail dedication fee, there has to be a park fund and a trail fund. And then this fee and this fund can only be used for the acquisition and development of parkland. So it can't be used for the maintenance of existing park facilities, including trails. Our parks and trail fees do need to be justifiable based on our capital improvement plan and open space plan that's included in our comp plan. This is a look at our comprehensive trails and open space concept plan that's in our comp plan. As you can see, that includes a number of trails. Those are those red, blue, and yellow dashed lines. Those have not yet been constructed. I would like to highlight that the city has not done a park study. A park study would be the most comprehensive way to get a definitive number. That would be an accurate park dedication fee number or dollar amount. Nonetheless, many cities do not do a dedicated park study. Park study would involve looking at our current acreage of parks, what's recommended based on the National Recreation Park Agency, determining what that gap is, how much of each density of housing we're projected to have, what the average household size is based on that density, and then determine the acreage of parks required. So this is something cities can do, we have not done it. Many cities don't do it. So cities end up charging a flat fee essentially for parks and trails, which is what we have been doing and what we are going to continue doing. Basically saying this dollar amount is required for this type of housing. Public Works does believe that even if we do charge a trail dedication fee, the fee will not be enough to cover the full cost of constructing the trails in our capital improvement plan. So future transfers from the general fund will still be required. But this will reserve a chunk of money for those trails. There are some pros and cons of collecting a trail dedication fee. A pro of it is that it is dedicated money for trails. Doesn't go to other park development, is specifically reserved for trails. But one con of it would be that instead of having a larger park and trail fund, our park dedication fee would account for trails. Instead, you kind of split that into two different funds. So you don't have that larger sum of money, you just have two smaller pools to pull from, depending on what you're doing. That's kind of a high-level overview. If you have any more questions, Nate is here to answer those. You are directed to provide a recommendation on the city code, Section sixty-six dash one six five, and the recommendation of the additional fifteen hundred dollars per unit of trail dedication fee in lieu of trail construction for new developments. So we're just looking for some input on this. Thank you.
I can add just a couple of things there. Good evening, Planning Commission. Nate Ashford, as you mentioned, I'm the Park Public Works manager. I know a lot of you, I've met some of you, but the Park Commission has been looking at this going back for quite a few years. This ordinance was put in place in two thousand seven and it's never been applied to any of our developments. The idea was to make it fair for all developers to come in that if we do have to apply this city code to a developer, that they're all kind of on the same page, just like we do with our park system. So they came up with the idea of a park or a trail dedication fee to kind of offset that. So they would look at each development the same way they do with park dedication when they bring it before you guys, if they decide they want to take cash in lieu of land dedication or the actual trail construction. From two thousand eight till twenty fifteen, we never had a development that showed up in here. So when the first one came in twenty sixteen, they were a little bit hesitant to apply this because they didn't want to make it an obstruction to development at the time. And since then, it hasn't really been applied, so. One of the options that the Park Commission, like I said, they would like to see a fifteen hundred dollar per unit, so each lot would pay that in lieu of the trail construction. Another option would be to just remove this completely from our city code, the requirement to build these trails. We did require them for Elavage and Capstone, but that was a little bit different there. Those developers wanted those trails in there and we gave them credit from their park dedication land in those instances. So it came off of their total park dedication, it wasn't this trail requirement on there, but. So that kind of brings us up to where we're at and how we got to this point. Like I said, the City Council had discussed it at their work meeting there. Kind of sounds like they're in favor of it, they haven't voted on it yet, but we're going to bring it to them in November along with the increase in the park dedication fee. So that was two thousand dollars. The Park Commission bumped that up to thirty-five hundred, just for reference. So between the two, you'd be looking at five thousand dollars per lot for a new development to come in. So that could affect developers that come before you guys with new developments and stuff like that, too, so.
Didn't once upon a time, we had somebody in here talking about trying to make our city, and get grander scope, but trying to make a trail system that basically ran across multiple cities like throughout Inoka County?
There is a, there is a trail connection planned. It's on that, on that map. It cuts across, it's the blue dotted line kind of going west to east at about two hundred and twenty-first, right past City Hall here.
Okay, I thought that's what it was. I just, I remember that being a, being a thing where maybe it was when we did the last comp plan review, which was still a decade ago.
Yep. And that's, that's been on their plan for a long time and it's going to be a while before it's constructed. They're kind of working their way north through the county. You can see it when you get down into Blaine and a lot of, in Andover. When they redo the roads down there, they build those trails as part of that long-term trail plan. But the nearest one we're going to have is actually going to be taking place next year, right down the very southeast corner of the city, coming into Coon Lake Beach there. You can see it on the map, it's just a little stretch of a blue dotted line.
Yep.
That's going to connect Lexington over to Martin Lake eventually, so. Technically, that's in the city, but only for a few feet.
Yeah.
But eventually, like all of our trails that the Park Commission has been working on is to try and connect up to that. One of the ones that they've been working on is going down Baton to connect City Hall, Booster Park, to the Fish Lake Nature Area. The Park Commission would like to see this as a dedicated fee because at one time, they did have a trail fee back in two thousand eleven. It was funded through the general fund, so it wasn't dedicated, it wasn't locked into trails. And the City Council took that money, shut that fee down, and used it to pay for some other stuff at the time.
A lot of things happened in two thousand eleven that way.
Yeah, so it was, they'd like to see a fee, just set aside for trails. Because they were going to build that trail at the time, it was pretty close to being greenlit.
Is it a fair statement to say that this would help in those endeavors?
That's, yes, yeah.
Okay.
And it's not a lot of money, it's not going to get them, not going to get them a long ways, the trails are expensive. But it's the number one request we get at the Park Commissioners, trails and pickleball courts, so.
Yep. And I think it was just a couple of years ago, I think we had conversations about parks and right now, it feels like we've got more than, more than needed. So I know I wouldn't be in favor of any feasibility study for it, but by any means. But if it helps, if it helps the progress along in any sense and keeping it out of the general fund, I don't have any opposition to that. And as always, I, just like we hope that the councils that we, that we work on, you know, they like our opinions and take our efforts, I'm going to lean the same on the parks. And this is what they're, they're looking for and that's fair and reasonable with what we're seeing in neighboring competitive cities that they'll put us out of the market on things. I have zero opposition to any of this.
Right, I echo that also. But Nate, you don't think that this is high enough to, to cover the costs?
So we built a trail on Baton, it was one block, basically one block long. We did almost all the work ourselves with our Public Works Department, we had to pay for the paving portion. And that stretch was about twenty thousand dollars. Now, if you have a development with, you know, ten, ten, say twenty homes in there, you're only going to get, you know, thirty-five thousand dollars, you're not going to get very far building a trail that's only a block long. And that was with our guys doing most of the work in-house with our own budget, so. It's not a lot, but it'll be something, I guess. And it kind of evens a playing floor between the two developers. If one actually had to construct it, if they required them to do what's in our city code, it'd be expensive for a developer to put a trail in with a development. And the way it's written, it's a trail on both sides of the roads in some instances. It's a trail, I mean, there's a lot of trails that could potentially be enforced with our ordinance.
Yeah, it's pretty intense commitment, from a developer perspective.
Yeah.
So have the other bodies discussed a higher fee then? Or it's fifteen sizes they've gone?
No, not for the trail. They discussed higher for the park dedication, but this is kind of where they're sitting at right now, I guess.
Right.
I was wondering why the park dedication fee cannot be used for maintenance of parks?
The dedication has, it's just the way the state statute is written, it has to be used for capital improvements. And that's part of the issue, too. If we build a lot of trails, eventually we're going to have to maintain those trails. We don't want to take on undue maintenance on trails that aren't being used. If it doesn't connect anywhere or a neighborhood, it's.
Similar to parks that are unused?
I guess, yeah, that is, my question is, how much is our community using these trails? Is this something that is our community has asked for and we, like, our residents are wanting these trails?
So the Park Commission did a survey, it was, it's been about ten years now, but it was the number one request of things was trails. So like our Booster Park out here, that thing is used all day, every day. We've added trails here, John Anderson Park, I know there's a lot of people that walk out by Corey's house. The new developments down there in Elavage and Capstone, the Stand Up Parkway and Viking Metals, those trails are going to be really nice. There's already people using those that live in the Elavage, they're using the new trails on the Capstone homes, trails already, but. The regional trails, maybe not, they're more used in high-density areas where people are biking or traveling to stores and stuff like that where they can, you know, do that instead of driving, but.
And we have some shoulders in the city, too, that are acting as the trail. Like normally, the county would have just ended it right at, you know, your driving line or, you know, you're going over. We've paid for the extra width, or the parks have paid for the extra widths for that.
Yep, some of the, some of the lines that are shown on this map that are existing are actually just wide, wide roads with wide shoulders, so.
Yep.
Technically an off-road trail, but they're safer than.
Yeah, Nate, isn't the biggest issue with this is we build a lot of bike trails, but then we don't get support to maintain them in the winter. And people, people go nuts when you don't maintain them. And it might even be one resident who walks that trail every day, but they'll be at the council meeting every month.
Yep.
Pounding that, hey, you built it, it's a trail, I walk it, I want to use it. So I think that's the big thing, that I'm all for building them, but we better plan on having them plowed.
And they got to be, I think, useful trails that go somewhere or provide a service, not just.
Yeah.
Right, that's why also it's not just build trails, to build trails, like, they're meaningful.
Yep.
Yes.
Like their park commissions on the.
Correct, they're in a place that people are going to be using them, that they're utilized in a way that the community is actually going to value from them. So, yeah, is that, what about that? Like he's bringing up all this maintenance piece of it, the workers to clear them, that type of thing. The fifteen hundred dollars, that doesn't seem like that's going to go very far to.
Can't be used for that, that comes from our general fund, Public Works budget.
Okay, so this is going to bring more cost?
Eventually, yeah, trails, just like, just like more roads, more houses, more everything. There's costs associated down the road, yeah.
That's part of why I started my line of questioning with, didn't we have someone who, with intent, right? If there's something more county-wide, things like that, and that can open up other doors to other things. But was there intent and purpose behind it?
And you said that this has not been implemented, this has not been something that any builder at this point has been tried, or?
Going back to two thousand and eight, our own housing market decline. Viking Preserve put a trail in in that development, that gets used all, a lot, but that was their park dedication, so they actually used their park dedication and constructed it. So they didn't have to pay park dedication fees on that one. Same thing with, I think it's called, they're all selling the same Prairie Ridge on Baton. It goes from two twenty-ninth kind of back towards two twenty-first. That whole first section there was built by the developer as their park dedication portion.
Okay.
Both of those were the first two developments that came into the city, going back to the housing market crash. So like I said, it was, they wanted to not make it too much of an impediment to get some development going, so.
So staff is in favor of this, right, or no?
Of the park, yes. We want, we'd like to see just something that's uniform, that we're not leaving a big gray area out there for developers.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Tanner in that if the Parks Commission has discussed it at length and the City Council has, I don't have any objections, I want to make sure that you're okay with it, too.
Yeah, we're okay with it, yeah.
Any other questions, discussions?
Do you have the direction that you're looking for then, from this body?
Yeah, do you need a formal?
I think we should, motion.
Do you want to do a motion?
Yeah. Yeah, so probably a motion to recommend the park fee as stated by the, by the Parks Commission.
I'll make a motion to recommend the fifteen hundred dollar per unit dedication fee.
Okay, great. And any second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? With none being, that motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah, good luck.
Okay. The next thing is we're going to review the twenty twenty-five system statement for the twenty fifty comprehensive planning cycle. Wow.
Yes, all right. I am providing just kind of an overview of our system statement. If you watched last night's council meeting, I'm giving roughly the same update I did there. Just, I think it's helpful for Planning Commission and City Council to receive this information now. It's about a three-year-long process and it's good to get everyone involved early on. So last month, the Metropolitan Council published the twenty twenty-five system statement for East Bethel. This officially kicks off our planning cycle for the twenty fifty comprehensive plan. Staff has reviewed the system statement, I'm going to just give you an overview of the most pertinent information included in that document. The full system statement is also included in your packet. If you've already read that or would like to read that, that's awesome. The full system statement is also included in your packet, if you've already read that or would like to read that, that's awesome. Some context for comprehensive planning and the system statement, because as Commissioner Belfini pointed out earlier, last time we did this was about ten years ago. So I wanted to just explain the how and the why. So why we do this is because the Metropolitan Land Planning Act, which was passed in nineteen seventy-six and has been amended many times since then. Requires that all local governments in the seven county metro area prepare and adopt a local comprehensive plan every decade. This act also specifies which elements we must include in our comprehensive plan. At its core, a comprehensive plan is a vision for the development of a city. It is a physical plan, it goes over things like land use, infrastructure, parks, all that stuff. But also, when a comprehensive plan is made with intention and thoughtfulness, it should be a reflection of a community's values, their social and economic values. So I really like to ask, you know, how do you want East Bethel to look for your children and your grandchildren, who will hopefully, hopefully be enjoying the city in twenty fifty? How we do this is that we are required to draft that plan by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-eight for the twenty fifty plan. Once this is drafted in twenty twenty-eight, it's up for review by the Met Council. They review it for conformance with the regional system, or Regional Development Guide, which is known as Imagine Twenty Fifty and was adopted earlier this year. To assist cities with this process, a system statement is prepared by the Met Council for each community. The system statement is intended to help cities develop their comprehensive plans by providing them with relevant data about population growth and jobs growth. It also impacts the, or outlines the impacts of the newly adopted Regional Development Guide, Imagine Twenty Fifty, and what that says for each city. So similar to my staff report, I've kinda split this up into four different topic areas. The first area is our growth forecast. A large part of the system statement and that twenty fifty plan is to predict growth. The Met Council's growth forecast is intended to help us anticipate which planning actions we need to take to accommodate the forecasted number of people living and working in our community in twenty fifty. Cities are not required to achieve the numbers outlined in the growth forecast, we are not penalized in any way for not reaching these numbers. Again, things like pandemics, recessions, those things happen that impact the number of jobs created or housing, houses developed. So, we're not held to these numbers, they're just projections. But by twenty fifty, East Bethel is predicted to have a population of fifteen thousand four hundred people, five thousand nine hundred households. And two thousand five hundred and forty jobs.
What year is that by?
Uh, twenty fifty, yep. So what that looks like is a population increase of thirty-six hundred people or sixteen hundred households. Of the total population in twenty fifty, about thirty-two hundred of those residents are predicted to be served by city sewer and water infrastructure. So, we can anticipate that a very large amount of that growth is gonna be concentrated in those areas with city sewer and water, or that will have city sewer and water. As for jobs, this looks like about doubling the number of jobs that we currently have in the city. So right now we're sitting at about thirteen hundred, this has us at about twenty-five hundred. Staff does believe that this growth projection is generally appropriate for population, households and jobs. It might be slightly high, but it's something that we can totally work with and plan based off of, so we're not disputing that with the Met Council. The next area that we look at is our community designation, our long-term service area and our municipal urban service area, these things all kind of work together. The Met Council assigns each city one or many community designations. Your community designation establishes your land use expectations, so the big one being obviously your overall density. This must be addressed throughout many aspects of your comprehensive plan. East Bethel has been assigned the designations of rural center and diversified rural, these are defined in your packet. Kind of as an overview, a rural center is a hub for commercial employment and housing development, and rural centers are served by city sewer and water infrastructure. Because of this, they are required to be developed at a minimum overall density of three units per acre. Rural centers are important because they support local economies and they provide services, so think your grocery store, your veterinary clinic, things like that. That's supposed, support lower density rural communities that surround them. These lower density rural areas are known as diversified rural communities, so again, we have rural center and diversified rural in East Bethel. These rural, or diversified rural communities often contain large lot residential developments and agricultural properties, so things that you see on the outskirts of our city. These areas are not projected to have wastewater or water service by twenty fifty, though some of these areas are within the long-term service area for service development. So, thinking beyond that twenty fifty horizon, at some unspecified date, they may receive those services. To support orderly growth, diversified rural communities have a maximum average density of four units per forty acres. So again, diversified rural is four units per forty acre, and then looking at our rural center designation. That is a minimum density of three units per acre, so two vastly different densities that we're working with in the city. What this means is that, uh, these designations are consistent with what East Bethel was assigned during the twenty forty planning cycle, but there are some small differences. So for example, during the twenty forty cycle, our rural center designation was that entire Highway sixty-five corridor. And then extended all the way out on our southern border to Coon Lake. It has shrunk significantly this cycle, so now it is only the areas that are within our twenty fifteen MUSA, so those areas that will be served by city sewer and water, hopefully, by twenty fifty. So it's a much smaller area, because this has shrunk, our diversified rural has grown. Another thing that we look at is our municipal urban service area or our MUSA. This is the area that's expected to get city sewer and water by twenty fifty, and this is unchanged. So our twenty forty MUSA is the same as our twenty fifty MUSA, those are those three zones in our city that will have this infrastructure, hopefully. There is a small error in some of the MUSA maps in our plan, this is pretty typical, the Met Council prepares over a hundred of these system statements, there are bound to be errors. And staff is correcting that later this week with our Met Council representative. And then the third thing that we look at with this is our long-term service area, so this is the area that's expected to eventually have city sewer. But does not yet have it and will not by twenty fifty, so this is far, far in advance. Before this long-term service area was that entire Highway sixty-five corridor and then also extended out to Coon Lake going east. And twenty, the twenty forty plan, we disputed that eastern extension of this, we said we are not planning to extend that out to Coon Lake. So the Met Council has come back and said, we're going to flip that over to the west side. So now it's the entire Highway sixty-five corridor flipping over to the west towards Andover and Oak Grove. So a small, small change there. Overall, we believe the community designation, the long-term service area and the twenty fifty MUSA are appropriate. We plan to have a meeting, planning staff has a meeting this week with the Met Council Local Planning Rep to get more context on these changes and discuss their implications. And also correct that planning or that mapping error, but really, nothing too surprising in this section. The third topic is housing, specifically affordable housing. There are a lot of misconceptions about what the Met Council can require as far as affordable housing development. Each comp, each comp planning cycle, the Met Council determines a regional need for affordable housing. So by twenty forty, that need for the entire seven county metro area is roughly forty thousand new affordable housing units. East Bethel's share of that is a hundred and eight new units, so that's what we need to plan for in our twenty fifty plan. What this means is that our comp plan is required to guide an adequate amount of land, using the Met Council's formula. That could be developed at a density that supports affordable housing at our area, area median income targets. So thirty percent, thirty-one to fifty percent and fifty-one to sixty percent, we have to guide land for that development. What this does not mean is that we actually are required to build it. So, we're not penalized for not building this affordable housing, we just have to guide enough land in our plan. In a manner that could facilitate the development of those one hundred and eight units. So we have to make the math work out, we have to have land that could be developed at a high enough density that it could be affordable housing.
If not already planned that way.
Yes, yep, so under our current comp plan, what that looks like is our mixed-use land use designation. That has a pretty wide range of density that's allowed in it, don't have it off the top of my head, but you can get pretty dense in there and that would make the numbers work out for affordable housing. Notably though, two of the largest developments in that mixed-use designation are Viking Meadows, the Capstone Project and the Sand Hill Parkway Town Homes or Elavage. Those are two market rate housing developments, so again, that land could have been, could have been developed for affordable housing, but nobody approached us with a proposal for that. Whereas we got two market rate proposals, we went with those. So again, we could build affordable housing, we do not have to, we just have to plan for it. And then the last topic I wanna get into is climate, so this is a significant change from previous planning cycles. In twenty twenty-three, the Metropolitan Land Planning Act goes amendment, or was amended. And now requires that all comp plans include statewide targets for greenhouse gas emission reductions, a greenhouse gas emission inventory. And then we have to identify mitigation and adaption strategies that the city could implement, again, we do not have to implement them, but we could implement them to address climate change. These must be included in the plan in order for it to be accepted by the Met Council. The Met Council is providing cities with a pretty comprehensive list of these strategies that they can choose from, or cities can come up with their own. So once this list is received, this is something that staff will be looking at and will be discussing with you all in the council. This is something that pretty much all planners in the metro are a little bit befuddled over, it's a new requirement and all wondering how it's gonna work. So, I'm confident we'll find strategies that work for East Bethel, but it's just something new that we have to consider, so. Looking ahead at next steps in the very short term, myself and Kendra are meeting with the Met Council Local Planning Rep later this week to discuss the system statement, some of our questions about the maps, what's required in the plan. And then also go over eligibility for a grant that would assist us with the cost of doing the comprehensive plan. It's about a two and a half to three-year-long process, it does get pretty expensive. We hope to officially begin drafting the twenty fifty plan in early twenty twenty-six, again, this is due at the end of twenty twenty-eight. So, it's about a three-year-long process, the last six months of it are sending the plan out to review for other cities. We have to send it to all of our neighboring communities, our school districts, the DNR, so it's about six months of just waiting for some feedback. So it's about two and a half years of active work. Throughout the planning cycle, you can expect staff to provide regular updates on ongoing planning efforts and to seek input from residents, local businesses and the council and commission members. Again, the goal of this entire project is to create a plan that is reflective of the city's values and goals, that starts with engagement. So, going out in the community and seeking feedback on what you all wanna see, I think that's really important. And I'm excited to start this process and keep you all updated along the way, please let me know if you have any questions.
So, with the three-year process, that second year is the most active one then, isn't it?
Yeah, so typically, I mean, this is my first comp planning cycle, but typically from my understanding, twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven. Primarily twenty twenty-seven would be our most active years when it comes to actually putting the plan together, yes.
And then twenty-eight is just kind of waiting for everything to be approved?
Yeah, so we would wanna send that out to neighboring communities probably by April of twenty twenty-eight to get their feedbacks, it's that six-month-long process there. So, that would just be waiting for things to get approved and finishing touches on the plan.
Kinda like prep, plan, polish, is the three-year period. Been through two of these already, Glenn, you're three now?
What?
Three of these comp plan reviews you've been through?
Too many. So, do any of these Met Council members live in East Bethel?
I do not know, I really don't.
Has anyone elected them to their positions?
They're appointed, I believe.
Alright. This comp plan should reflect the city's values and aspirations. They have zero stake in those, they have zero accountability. Why are we reacting to what they, why does what they have to say matter to us?
It's, I mean, the crux of it is it's required by the Metropolitan Land Planning Act, I know that's not a great answer, city, all cities are required to do it.
Their original charter was to deal with water issues in the city of Minneapolis. Now they are telling people what their growth is supposed to look like, what low-income housing they need to put in their plan. They're giving all this data, the climate change stuff. Why do we respond to that?
Again, it's, it's what, what's required, I think as a planner, we can accept that this is, it's a frustrating direction to receive. Sometimes from some overarching body that gives us direction to the entire twin cities. But we have to do it, unless you wanna sue the Met Council, we have to do it. So, I want to make this process as seamless and painless as possible for everyone. I think there's a way to create this plan that does take community feedback into account and create something that reflects the values we did in twenty forty. Or for the twenty forty plan, and I'm confident we can make an even better one this time.
Well, last time that I remember, the questions would be asked, would you like, what would you like to see? Would you like to see grocery stores, would you like to see this or that? But it never comes with a, at what cost? Like, do you wanna see the population increase by thirty percent to, so that you can have a grocery store? Would you, or would you prefer to drive fifteen minutes to the ones that are out there that conserve your needs? So it's not always a balanced questioning where the implications are thought about. So like, sure, I would like to see a grocery store that was five minutes away, but do I want to turn the city into Blaine to accomplish that?
I was actually surprised at how little they thought there was gonna be growth by twenty fifteen, twenty fifty. And that's why I asked, because they're just projecting fifteen thousand by twenty fifty?
Yep, roughly fifteen thousand.
Thirteen thousand now, eleven thousand?
We're eleven thousand-ish now, yep.
It's not a huge increase.
And I think with, I mean, with Elavage, with the Capstone Project, we're already well on our way to seeing some of that population increase. So again, this is just a process we have to, have to do, hoping to make it reflective of the community through some of that feedback, considering those factors that you brought up. I think there's way to, ways to work with all of that.
Well, you said we have to do it unless you wanna sue Met Council, but what, why would we have to sue them? If we just made our own plan, ignored them, what are they gonna do?
We are legally required to send it off to them for review by the Metropolitan Land Planning Act. So again, that, that was adopted in nineteen seventy-six for all cities in the seven county metro area, so we do have to comply with that. I don't have the statute number off the top of my head.
This was, who voted for that or who created that act?
I should probably know that, I do not, I just know it was adopted in nineteen seventy-six and cities have followed it since, I, I will do my research on that, though.
Okay, and I think that maybe the city administrator is a, a good person to answer that. Or the city council, who, who is going to be complying or not complying with this also.
Was the last one all made by city staff or did they contract out?
Yes, so we contracted out in, last time we had this, so last cycle we did contract out. And we are planning to contract out some of this again, again, I'm the only full-time planning staff that the city has right now. So, in order to keep things afloat back in our offices, I cannot take on this massive task. There's a twenty-six-page checklist of all of the requirements that are included in the plan. Some of them are easy, some of them are, include a map of this, but some of them involve an in-depth traffic analysis of all of the traffic deaths in the past five years in the city. That is a lot, so we are planning to go out for RFP at some point in the next few months to figure out.
They wouldn't use who we used last time to just keep things fluid?
That's something we've discussed, we don't have an exact plan for going out for RFP yet, so that's something that I can bring up with finance and the city administrator. I think it's worth looking at the costs that other firms will, will charge us and going from there, but that's ultimately a decision, that's.
Yeah, I know, I know they're pretty extensive, it, it is not unusual for cities to.
It is not, yes, especially of our size, yep.
Has the city council discussed it yet?
Uh, we reviewed this last night, did not get into the RFP or who's actually going to be doing this plan, it was just that overview. This is something, so again, we plan to start planning in early twenty twenty-six, so the next few months are when we're gonna kind of establish what that's actually going to look like.
Well, I, I don't wanna dismiss your feelings at all, I, going through this the last time, I certainly understand. I do, I don't think we need to be pressing grace on this, so we could, you know, talk with city administrator or city council. Especially city council.
Well, just as an example here, you're, you said that we're required by the Land Planning Act of, Metropolitan Land Planning Acts nineteen seventy-six. This climate thing is from twenty twenty-three, an update, was that something that went before what body? And voted on and decided that they needed to change this to require climate planning? Who, who votes on this stuff?
I mean, this is a state statute, so it was adopted by the state legislature. I can do more research on this, again, I probably should know this and I can get back to you, I'll send you an email later this week with all of that information if you would like.
Cause for, to me, I mean, not just to this city, but they're pushing low-income housing and dense housing in rural areas. And then they're saying, how are you going to reduce emissions? So they're creating the problem and they're saying, how are you gonna deal with it?
Yeah, it will be interesting to see what their ideas are for dealing with it. Cause you were saying that they're gonna give you kind of a list, right?
Yes, yep, because this is a new requirement, there will be, there's, yeah, going to be a list published by them of acceptable strategies. And what the anticipated impacts of those strategies are. Again, this is all stuff I will bring up to our rep, he's visiting on Friday, and I will bring up your concerns, Commissioner Terry, for sure. But yes.
And Glenn, and I, I echo some of your statements, don't, don't take my next phrase, phrase being argumentative in that too. I think some of the spirit of this though is not, I, sorry, let me rephrase that. I could see someone at a Met Council having a response somewhere in, in, in this realm of, we're not trying to tell you that you have to do this. We're asking that you plan for the capability. It was once explained to me, once upon a time, that it was more about kind of the ripple effect, you know, seeing. you know, seeing from where that, the heart of the city is and the growth that's happening, what happens when it pushes out. So they're asking to help be planned in the cap, or in the capacity that it could happen, not you have to build this, right? It kind of goes along that same thing of, and just like Grace had said, it said it well. It's kind of all in who the developer is, what they want to build, right? If we originally planned for what once was the city center, you know, two, two comp plans ago to now that's being developed and is physically being done as we speak and not done in a overly high-dense, in fact, it was reduced even almost, I think, by half of what it originally was, and they're still making it work, doesn't mean that that's what we have to accept either. We just have to make sure at least there's parameters could or would it be available. So, I hear what you're saying, and I'm not saying I'm advocating for or against. I'm just saying I could see a response in that realm being something of having it, not needing it, instead of needing it and not having it. Maybe that's a more eloquent way of putting it.
Yes, I think you said that very well. It's a guiding document. It is, we are not held to it. So, it's, we need to plan, anticipate for all of these things. We do have to update our code in response to the comprehensive plan, just to make sure that things align, very typical. But again, we are not held to any of what's in this plan.
So, the low-income housing, for example, we don't have support services for that. So it's, it's sort of a pie-in-the-sky thing to say, well, you should put this amount of low, even though you're saying we don't have to be held to it. But why are we even, we're, we're spending money for people to come up with addressing all these things that are just thrown out, like, with no, no understanding of what this city is, or what the residents actually want. And then it, something that doesn't make sense, like, you're going to not have the services, but you have to show that you could do that without those services.
Yeah, I think you bring up a good point there, and I think it goes back to what does the market dictate, dictate? I think someone who's looking to develop affordable housing might see, okay, East Bethel doesn't have transit. They don't have a grocery store that's accessible. Might not be somewhere that's feasible for this type of development. Therefore, we might end up with things like Elevage and the Capstone Homes. Again, we have to guide land for our mixed-use land use designation, which is where that affordable housing could be built, has an extremely broad density range associated with it. So, something that we have to plan for, we do not have to build it.
One, one could even say the expand, the expansive area for the current apartment complex behind the movie theater would also still accommodate that same requirement that they're built, that they're putting, and we're already plotted for it. It's just when, when they're full and ready to have the other half of it. And once upon a time, there was also a temporary transit station there just to do feasibility study to see if it was being used, and it's no longer there. So, again, yeah, the market may dictate where it goes, just to, to validate what you're saying, Grace. But again, I think we see what's happened and where it's going and how fast it's going, and it's not at that speed that one could predict.
And this really isn't much different of a process from the 2040 plan process, the 2030 plan process. It is, it is a big process every time, but there's nothing substantially different in this. So, we've made it work in the past. Confident we can make it work going forward.
Anything more?
I've said my case.
I thank you for that. Anybody else want to talk to, to this? If not, there's really nothing that we need to do right now. You're just kind of giving us a heads up on it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the staff update. Do you have anything?
Yes, a few quick things. We did get a application for a new planning commissioner at the end of last week. So, next meeting, please expect to be interviewing someone for that open planning commission seat. We also have about three to four new applications for development for the, for projects for that November meeting. I'm predicting it may be a long one, so eat your dinner, bring your water bottle. It'll be a long night. And then, as Councilmember Mundell said, we do have a potential short-term rental ordinance development project kind of coming up to address what he was talking about earlier. So, something that will probably be on your radar within the next few months. That's all I have.
If next month is packed, can we please push that one out? I think the, the short-term rental is slowing down at, at the moment with the lake, and it's not frozen yet.
Yeah, that's probably a winter project for staff, so, yeah.
I think I know what that is.
So there's one thing that I want to address, and that is we don't have a vice chairperson. So, I was wondering if we could have, we need to have an election, don't we? I think?
Believe so, yes.
Typically, we do, yes.
And, and it should probably be on the agenda. So could we put that on the agenda for next month?
Perfect, yep.
I am going to be gone the January meeting.
Okay.
So, I'll need somebody to cover.
Alright, got that written down. I'll put that on the agenda.
Okay, perfect.
And then we typically hold new elections February post the January.
Right.
Potential changeover and seats, which who do we, what do we have? Do we know what we have coming up?
I will look into that. I'll send you all an email.
We had a lot of kind of varied years with on and offs over the last few years, so it's hard to remember who's what where and how.
Well, it, it actually is posted on the city website, who's going, coming on.
It is, yes. I can pull that up right now, actually. Let's just do that.
And this, the new person, if we get one?
That, yeah, the, the chair that is absent right now, that actually expires in, or that term is up in 2026, early 2026. So, that would be a very short-term appointment.
And in the past, on those extremely short terms, I think we've used that to be, we've just added it on to the, what would be the next term. So instead of thirty-six months, it'd be thirty-eight.
Who's, who's coming off in twenty-six?
Actually, none of, none of you. I just looked. So that, that vacant seat, that is the only one that expires in 2026.
Okay, great. So if we could get a full slate, then we could just go on for the full, for twenty-six. And maybe we could do an election for a chairperson then in February, assuming that we'll get somebody in the, the city council to approve somebody.
Yes, sounds good.
If, if it's the will of the council anyway, at least by idea.
Exactly.
If it's going to be two months for, or, you know, if it's next month and then they're on in December, I guess I would rather see it for, just add a month to the full term to allow for that to not have, somebody to have, you know what I mean, to just be on for a month and then have to reapply or.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
But that would be something for the council, so if you could get direction from that.
Yes, I'll have to look at that. I'm still pretty new to this process, so I will do some research on that.
Yep, I'm just giving you heads up.
Anything else?
Can I move to adjourn?
You could move to adjourn if you'd like.
I'd like to.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion, disagreement? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, opposed, that motion passes. So, thanks, everybody.